I'd like to call the meeting to order. If we could stand and say the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everybody, for coming. We have one visitor signed in wishing to speak. This is Kelsey Ryan.
Hi. I've never been here. Do I just go up and?
You go right to the podium. This custodian remind me, what's it, three minutes?
Three minutes.
Three minutes.
Okay. So I'm starting my time yet. As I'm talking, if anybody wants information on what I'm talking about, feel free to cast this around. This information on our youth track program. So I'm going to cut the chase and then I'm going to explain a little bit about what I do. I'm here to ask the board to consider lowering the cost of a track rental. It's currently at $500 an hour. I own a youth track and field business and we've been trying very hard to bring this program to the Amherst district using the track and it's just completely unaffordable for us to do that. So I'm a parent of three Smallwood Elementary students. I live by the Harlem Road Community Center. Like I said, I'm the owner of Snyder Track and Field. It's a youth track and field program providing classes, one-day clinics, camps, and club teams to kids in the Buffalo area. My husband and I also coach at Damon University. We started Snyder Track and Field in 2020 during the pandemic, really to keep kids busy and it grew tremendously. We now hold classes in Tonawanda Orchard Park, Williamsville, the city of Buffalo, and also, of course, where it began, in Snyder at the Harlem Road Community Center. We've grown dramatically from our six-week classes. So now we have a very large club team that could really utilize a full track space. But right now, we have 80 kids scheduled for our summer class team and we have to practice on the ECC North Campus. I'll put in quotes "track." It's a paved oval, really because that's all that's available and all that's available in our price range. So for four years, I've tried to get on the Amherst track, but there's just absolutely no way I could afford the $500 an hour rate. It is $300 an hour for a nonprofit, which we are not. We are for-profit. We try very hard to keep our program affordable. Our number-one goal is to expand the sport of track and field and the popularity. To, really, our goal would be to get it to the level of ball sports. That's sort of our dream. But really, to get more and more kids exposed to the sport. So we are opening our own indoor facility in Williamsville, actually, in a couple of days, which is very exciting. But it just can't, it's nowhere near big enough what we need for our summer club team to be able to rent. Like I said, we're not a nonprofit. That's for many reasons. But really, we try to attract the very best coaches to give the kids the very best experiences possible. I think if, you know, anybody knows anybody that's done our program, I think they may attest that we do a very high-quality program and so we pay our coaches well on top of that. We believe track and field is a sport that kids of all ages and abilities can benefit from. There's certainly winners in track and field, but really, anybody can be a winner by simply improving on their own past performances. So we draw kids that are extremely competitive. We draw kids that really haven't succeeded in other sports and find success. And we draw a lot of kids with various developmental disabilities. So we get a lot of kids with autism, a lot of kids with ADHD. And with that, I increase staffing. So I make sure that we are well-prepared. I actually have a coach on board who has her master's degree in applied behavioral analysis. And, you know, I'm paying for all of this to make sure that kids are getting a great experience. But I still, with the money coming in, there's just no way I can afford that $500 rental. So what I'm here today to propose is a couple of different suggestions. Number one, if the school would consider a partnership with Snyder Track and Field to hold practices and community track meets, definitely around the school calendar. So I think Amherst school events certainly take precedence over anything that I would have to do. But if we can have some sort of partnership where the rate could be brought down to $100 per practice or event that we do, that's still higher than what we are paying anywhere else, but I think the facility would be worth it. Or consider exceptions for any group looking to rent track space. So I could have, I'm sort of envisioning that the board could do this on a case-by-case basis where the board could determine if the activity would provide significant benefit to the community in which case, you know, an appropriate fee could be applied. Just one other thing I'll mention is that-
I have to stop you, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Your time is up. If you want to hand whatever you have to Ms. Custodian, we'll be happy to look at it, but I have to stop you.
Okay. The last thing is just that-
We've got to be the same for everybody.
I know. We donate it to the Fun Run and to Windermere. So we're active in the community.
Thank you.
So thank you very much.
All right, reports of boards and committee. I believe, Mrs. Golbach, we have a DEI meeting?
Yes. Last Wednesday, the District Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee met as subcommittees. We had three different groups meet together aligned with our strategic plan priorities. So teaching energy and student life and first pride. And as each subcommittee met, we worked on the same types of things within our priority group. So we worked to revise the strategic plan to incorporate the DEI-related initiatives, reviewed and revised the mission statement for the DEI team, and identified terms for a common DEI language to have throughout the district. So progress is going along great. We're going to meet one more time on June 11th to finish all drafts and kind of give feedback to each other, different groups. And we look to get the new revised strategic plan to the board in August. Where Dr. Shanahan is.
Great. Any other committee updates? All right, then let's open the superintendent's report.
Well, good. I have some of our high school students and Mr. Pidgen here to honor our Students of the Month from April and May. Welcome.
Thank you. Now, ask Dahlia Addison to come up. Thank you, as always, for the wonderful opportunity to shine a spotlight on all of the great work done by our students at Amherst High School and our staff. And I have wonderful Addison Rogers and Dahlia Perry here to share with you our April and May Students of the Month and Teachers of the Month.
Talia Christopher is nominated as Student of the Month for April by the Pathfinders, Mrs. Boyer, Mr. Surzak, Mrs. Redine, and Mr. Benton. Mrs. Boyer Strang said that Talia is a very hard-working senior who has just completed two separate SEALs of By Literacy in both Spanish and Latin. She also scored a gold medal for her performance on the National Latin Exam, the highest award that can be scored. She is always willing to go above and beyond and is highly involved in a great variety of school activities. Her speech on plenty's national history during her SEAL presentation made it fun to learn about the insects and honey from the ancient world. Way to go, Talia. She's not here today, but-
Her mom?
Her mom.
Oh, there you are.
Mrs. Snyder states that Talia is a sound advocate, exceptional teamwork and leadership skills, and she embodies an innate ability to be inspired. Talia has what it takes to be a leader. She is an exceptional team member within athletics and the T A B, a natural leader. She has been an active member of the cross-country, indoor, and outdoor track and field teams. She always gives 100% in every class, practice, and game. That energy is contagious with her teammates. Mrs. Redine states that Talia is such a kind-hearted and positive person who gets along with everyone. She is well-rounded and excels in many areas of academics as well as athletics. Mrs. Redine has enjoyed having Talia in the Advanced Placement Calculus this year because she thinks deeply about the content and has an excellent ability to put complex mathematical ideas into her own words. Talia's inclination for hard work and her dedication to excellence have allowed her to expand her knowledge to consider the complexities of subject matter. Talia is an outstanding representative of the student body here at Amherst and is very fortunate to have the opportunity to teach her. Mr. Benton states that Talia is both an amazing student and person. What makes her unique is her desire and perseverance to try new things. Talia undertakes things for the pure joy of it. There are very few students in his 35-year career with such an impressive body of work focused on enrichment, the betterment of others, and for just pure enjoyment. She is intrinsically motivated to fill her time with quality character-building activities as any students he has ever worked with. Mr. Benton can only imagine the tremendous impact Talia will have in her future and she'll have fun doing it the whole time. Congratulations, Talia, for being chosen as one of April's Students of the Month. Second, Luke Foster was nominated as Student of the Month for April by Pathfinders, Mr. Robert Genozio, Mrs. Boyer Strang, Mr. Hare, Mr. Berger, and Mr. Kevin Hibbert. Mr. Genozio states that not only is Luke an outstanding student in his class, but he's very respectful and outgoing. He is a well-rounded, school-spirited student who is very deserving of this award. Mrs. Boyer Strang states that Luke always brings a high energy to class. He encourages his classmates and works hard every day. He's also very active in sports and school activities. His attitude that he brings to class every day makes class enjoyable and fun for everyone around him. Way to go, Luke. Mr. Hare states that Luke is a very smart and all-around amazing student. He is a high-achieving student and works very hard to achieve his grades, especially in math. His hard work pays off as he is one of the highest class averages all year. His work ethic is impressive and he always puts forth maximum effort. Aside from academics, Luke is one of the most polite, conscientious, and respectful students he has ever had. On a daily basis, he says thank you as he leaves, which says so much about his character. He is a pleasure to have in class and is extremely deserving of this award. I'm proud of him as a student. Mr. Berger states that Luke Foster is an exceptional student. Kind, courteous, sincere, dedicated, sharp, caring, consistent, communicative. The word of positive attitude could be immense. Luke is superlative. It is truly a pleasure to have him in class. And Mr. Hibbert states that Luke is a respectful, responsible student who shows excellent character in his class. Luke always comes into the classroom in a good mood and ready to engage in classroom and the ceramic studio. His focus and dedication shows in the beautiful work he creates on the pottery mill. He is always friendly, courteous, and willing to help out his fellow peers while working in the clay. Luke is very deserving of the honor of Student of the Month. Congratulations, Luke, as being one of the April Students of the Month. Finally, Mr. Gregory Kisker was nominated as Teacher of the Month for April by the Pathfinders and Ofsa Konrad. Ofsa states that Mr. Kisker deserves to be recognized this month. His unwavering dedication to his student success is evident in his teaching. He goes above and beyond to make sure that each student feels supported and engaged. Mr. Kisker is the type of teacher where you know you can have an open and honest conversation with and be treated with the utmost respect. Ofsa has only had him this year, but knows she can depend on Mr. Kisker with whatever she needs. His humorous personality and his downright welcoming presence make him one of the best teachers at Amherst. Congratulations, Mr. Kisker, as being chosen as April's Teacher of the Month. And now, it's all Students of the Month and Teachers of the Month for May. Samuel Luke Johnson was nominated as Student of the Month for May by the Pathfinders, Mrs. Redine, and Mrs. Surzak. Mrs. Redine states that Sam is an excellent candidate for Student of the Month. He is hard-working, enthusiastic about learning, and disciplined toward his studies. She really enjoys his presence in AP Calculus class. He's an active participant in class and his questions often show a deeply woven understanding of the concepts. He can often be seen working with his classmates. They seem to have a lot of fun working together to complete difficult problem-solving tasks. Congratulations, Sam, keep making us proud. Mrs. Surzak states that Samuel, Sam Johnson, is certainly one of a kind, a student that stands out not only for his academic accomplishments, but also for his exceptional character and unique passions. Sam is one of our Amherst elites, having truly earned his ranking among the top of his graduating class. What you are not able to see on any of his school transcripts is what often sets students of his caliber apart from their peers. It is one thing to have an outstanding grade point average in the most challenging courses and impeccable standardized test scores depicting a high intelligence. However, it is what happens in the classroom that speaks volumes. In working with Sam over the past three years, Mrs. Surzak has been able to get a clear picture of who Sam truly is beyond what you see on paper. First, Sam surrounds himself with friends who challenge him, intellectually within and outside of the classroom. They often engage in positive, but thoughtful and relevant discussions. He's attracted to the complexities of the topic at hand. Furthermore, Sam is organized with meticulous time management. Not only does this come into play with balancing the rigorous academic course load each year, but also with his large family and extracurriculars. You could almost say that Sam is efficient to a fault. He provides himself on thoughtfully considering what he spends time doing as well as the correlation between the amount of time he contributes and the results. Overall, Sam is academically gifted with an innate ability to absorb information quickly while also striving to take that information to the next level. He is self-disciplined and passionate about learning and an individual of high character integrity, always striving to do the right thing. Congratulations, Sam, as being chosen as one of May's Students of the Month.
I'll also interject quickly that, given Samuel's leadership, our pit orchestra took number-one place at the Shea's High School Music Awards recently, and Sam received that for us. So congratulations on that achievement.
Celeste Witten was nominated as a Student of the Month for May by the Pathfinders, Ms. Chrissy Skelzo, Mrs. Redine, and Mr. Zobel. Ms. Skelzo states that Celeste is one of the absolute best kids in her graduating class because of her maturity, calm sense of self, and her continued dedication to learning. She's put in the countless hours helping her school and community. She's in our hardest classes on multiple sports teams and captains of clubs in various organizations. She's highly engaged in all that she does and yet she has a very down-to-earth, approachable vibe about her. As we got into junior year, Ms. Skelzo approached Celeste, knowing she already had quite a lot on her plate, and pitched the idea of designing and running a clothing donation program through our school. They could collect items and get them back out to clothing insecure kids. But she needs someone to really flush out all the details. Celeste jumped on the project and, within a day, she recruited another classmate to co-coordinate with her and many peers to help assist with the project. She offered to collect clean and labeled donations and then cart-epping back to school to our very own homemade thrift shop. Celeste and her co-chair titled the project as the Class Closet and through their efforts, they have been able to get many gently-used items into grateful new hands. This has been a huge success and many of the thanks truly go to Celeste's efforts. As the advisor to this group, what she has loved most is that even in the hustle and bustle of an early morning where we have to get the clothes to school and then out on the floor, many of the kids are running around and almost sweating from their stress, whilst Celeste is always very calm and confident. She has such a vast capacity to handle information, organization, and intensity. So her ability to produce meaningful work even in the craziest situations is incredibly hot. Ms. Skelzo has seen the same skill repeated on the field hockey team of which she is a captain and at our new ASL club of which she is vice president. Celeste is a fantastic young woman. Mrs. Redine states that Celeste is a shining star of our student body and an excellent choice for Student of the Month. In addition to excelling in her studies, Celeste is very involved with many facets of our school community, from athletics to music to other student-led activities. And in fact, Celeste was one of the student leaders of the Class Closet thrift shopping endeavor that will hopefully continue for years to come. Congratulations, Celeste. We are very proud of you and all your accomplishments. Mr. Zobel states that he's quite positive, that any words he has to say about Celeste will not even begin to describe what a wonderful person she is. Celeste has all the amazing qualities a teacher could ever ask for of a student. She's motivated and organized, respectful, and goal-oriented, attentive and patient, disciplined, friendly, and honest. It is evident Celeste cares deeply about understanding the content she's studying. Her personality is such that she asks great questions and will keep going until she has a full grasp of the concept. Her perseverance through moments of frustration are truly great. The academic side of Celeste is only a component of who she is. Getting to know Celeste in class this year is evident she cared very much about the world and people around her. Her leadership and kindness are augmented by her acts of compassion and integrity. Celeste is a great human being and will be a wonderful leader from our future. Mrs. Boyer states all the hard work Celeste has gone through for their SEAL By Literacy project. She's done an excellent job. Congratulations, Celeste, as being chosen as one of May's Students of the Month. And our Teacher of the Month was Ms. Chrissy Grossman. She was nominated as Teacher of the Month for May by Pathfinders and Quinn Dill. Quinn states that Ms. Grossman would like to nominate Mrs. Grossman, a gym teacher here at Amherst High School. She's an amazing teacher who makes gym class fun and attainable for everyone who puts the effort in. Outside of classroom, she helps coach Amherst's dance team, which she's a part of. Having her in dancing is such a great experience, but she always puts forth her best energy at our meetings and games. Even attendance is short and our choreographer doesn't come to the meet practice, she still helps teach the girls at the practice and does actively everything she can for us. Overall, she is such an awesome instructor and the best student teacher I've ever had. Congratulations, Ms. Grossman, as being chosen as May's Teacher of the Month.
Thank you, Addison and Dahlia, and thank you for the opportunity this year to share all of the great student achievements and the great work of our teachers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you to our Pathfinders for being here tonight. Thank you all for coming and for all the wonderful things you're doing. Certainly feels like a good night to celebrate with some ice cream. Just something on my mind. But I'd also like to welcome Mr. Rob Adams, our Director of Health, PE, and Athletics, to provide you with his annual update on health, PE, and athletics.
I get up and everyone leaves. This is always a great time of year for me because as you get through the year, we get to highlight so many of our kids, our student athletes, our staff, our coaches, our community. And there's so much. And so how to narrow it all down into one presentation is always a challenge for me. But one thing I always come back to is our mission, which I'll kind of get into. So what are we going to do today? First of all, I'm Rob Adams, your proud Director of Health, PE, and Athletics. I love Amherst. I love being here. I love presenting on all of the things that we do throughout the year. Not only our mission, but our athletics by numbers. I like to look at our trends as we move through the years as far as numbers and participation. That's always important to look at. Some buzzwords you'll see in our mission. Excellence, the educational and the competitive experience we'll talk about. Sportsmanship, character, leadership, competence, civility, citizenship, my three Cs in what develops culture. Our Amherst Strength and Education Program. I'm thankful to be able to talk about what we're doing in our health education program and our physical education program throughout the district as well. So how do we culminate all this and how do we align to this? It's our mission. And you'll see kind of those buzzwords. We talked about the educational and competitive experience, leadership, sportsmanship, competence, character, civility, citizenship, what we want our Amherst student athletes to come out being. So how do we do this? How do we align to it? First of all, 7th through 12th, we have 713 participants, individual participants from 7th to 12th grade, which is pretty outstanding. So let's break this down a little bit more. I'm a big proponent and a big advocate for three-sport athletes for many different reasons. We have 127 of those. Two-sport athletes, 240, and one-sport athletes, 328. Obviously, you want those numbers to shift over to that two and three. At the high school level, I like to break it down by class. This gets to show us where kind of trends are, who's participating, who isn't, what do we need to do, what targets we need to hit. A big one here, freshmen, we're up seven points at 61% from last year. And going down into our seniors, we're down, which we kind of predicted still from the pandemic, that kind of lull in participation, which we kind of see and we read about all throughout. So we really concentrated on that from this past year. So what does that leave us? The most important number, which is a 55% participation rate at our high school, which is excellent. Anywhere from 30 to 40, you're in a green light, you're in a, you have a great program. We're at 55%, which is outstanding. I like to look at the middle school as well. So break down the 7th and 8th graders. This is our future. What are we looking at here? 7th grade, we're up. 8th grade, down. We can kind of see where we're focusing our efforts with our 8th grade. And obviously, what can we do for our seniors to kind of enrich that experience for them as they get to those latter years of the middle school and latter years of the high school where everybody kind of seems to check out because they're going on to bigger and better things? But what does that leave us for the middle school? Same as last year, 57% participation rate, which again, between 7th and 8th grade is huge. It's excellent. So we should be really proud of that as a district. So what is the value of all this? What is the value of education-based athletics? I can't preach this enough. It's why we support athletics. It's why athletics enriches the school day, the academic school day. We see academic achievement. We see school attendance being there. Graduation rates, fewer disciplinary problems, increased test scores, lower dropout rates. This is why we do what we do. And just some, just a couple of those data points from our, from our school, this is from our middle and our high school. Attendance, our tardies are less than 3%. So our student athletes in the greater whole, less than 3% of our tardy as far as the annual basis. Behavior, any athletics referrals that come in is less than 1% of the total amount of referrals the district sees in the middle and the high school on this annual basis. Proof is, proof is there for us. That brings us into that excellence, that educational experience. What athletics brings us from the classroom. 27 of our 31 varsity programs were recognized as Scholar-Athlete Teams. The goal is 31 out of 31. But we did meet the requirements to be recognized as a school of excellence. Our goal is a school of distinction, which gives us that 100% of our programs being Scholar-Athlete Teams, where the roster carries over that 90% average throughout their season. We were able to honor 200 individual Scholar-Athlete Awards given throughout all three seasons. This means these individuals carry a 90 or above average throughout their season, which is also a feat in itself. But data point I started concentrating on this year because I'm a big proponent of this is our three-plus-sport varsity Scholar-Athletes. These are varsity athletes that have excelled in all three or more seasons. And this year, we had 33 varsity athletes, which, again, if you go back to kind of the norm, you're looking in the teens sometimes. We have you 33 of these individuals is also something to be proud of. I also love the Section 6 All-Western New York Selects of our Scholar-Athlete Award. Coaches are given a guideline to send in with the transcripts and a committee in Section 6 votes on. So they get hundreds of these applicants from every school in the section. And we had a bunch of our kids recognized. And spring is still being determined. We're still kind of in a mindset in spring. Well, mine's in winter of next year, but we're here. So congratulations to those athletes. That's a huge honor. The competitive experience, also attached to excellence. This is hard to kind of narrow down, so I did my best to get all three seasons into one and some of the highlights for our athletes and the experience, not only the accomplishment that they made, but the experience they were able to achieve throughout that, whether it's an ECIC championship, a sectional championship, or going on to a state championship, which we had a lot of this year. First, I'd like to recognize Vanessa Bloomfield. She's part of our gymnastics team, which we're merged with Williamsburg South with. She's been on that team now for, I think it's her third year. She was chosen to be part of the composite Section 6 team from her accomplishments throughout the year. That Section 6 team went on to win the state championship, so we're able to honor Vanessa as a state champion, which is excellent for her to experience that. Our girls' cross-country team won sectionals this fall, which is great. They also went undefeated in the ECIC along with the boys. I'd like to really highlight them and congratulate those guys. These things are hard to do, to win a section, to go to a state championship. In the last two years, it's almost been kind of normal for us, which is pretty great. And this is just a photo opportunity of our Section 6 team. And along with our Section 6 girls' team, Luca from our boys' team, who placed fifth at sectionals, earned a bid to the state championship meet as well. And they were all able to be out there together. Moving into girls' tennis. Anna Wee-Nata Rodomski, Section 6 Doubles Champs. That was an awesome tournament for them that was held, which earned them their bid to states representing Section 6. And there, they competed and earned top eight in the state as far as doubles teams, which is pretty spectacular. There's them kind of hanging out with the top eight there. So proud of them. So that's, there's so much more that happened to fall, but that kind of condenses it a little bit. Moving into winter, our boys' basketball team went on, went on a great run again this year. They were ECIC Division 2 champions. Coach Kenzie and those guys on that staff won a great program for those boys. Our girls' swim team got second place at sectionals. Okay, we say second place, but this is hard to do in swimming. So we are so proud of them. And with that, we had Gia Catuso break a school record, a pool record. She also earned a bid to states and she was also part, represented Amherst at the girls' state championship for girls' swimming. Boys' wrestling, highest participation rate in years for them. Boys' wrestling, highest participation rate in years for them. We have 47 boys on that team. Not all pictured here, obviously, but what can I say about them? It's their first ECIC championship since 2000. Coach Bauer and all those coaches that are with him, that you can see on the bottom right there, that helped us out throughout the season. What an amazing accomplishment for them. Again, another hard sport to do well in, but our guy Zach Said, we were able to send him to states based on his accomplishments. And he did just an amazing job and what an amazing experience for him and our coaches. Girls' basketball, a Cinderella story for them this season with the coaching staff, a group of youngsters. And man, did they play and man, did they come out of it. I'm still trying to figure out if there's been a nine seed to win a sectional championship. I still have yet to get a, no, so I think we're, I think we're one of the first to get a number nine seed winning the championship. So congratulations to them on a spectacular season. Indoor track, again, we see Luca, he was able to make another trip to a state championship for indoor track along with Emma Lippa. They, they scored well in their section and they were able to experience the indoor track state championship there with their coaches, Coach McDowell and Biddle. Winter was awesome. We were able to, not only just the season, but Winter Wingfield, she's an amazing and outstanding young lady, one of our bowlers on the girls' bowling team. Her accomplishments throughout the season earned her a spot on the Section 6 composite team for girls' bowling, which they went on to win the state championship for girls' bowling. So we're able to honor Winter as a state champion as well, along with her teammates from the other schools in Section 6 that she was able to compete with. Winter, long winter, but fun winter. Spring, sticking with that competitive experience, flag football, won the ECIC championship. They're actually co-champ, still a champ, but it's the first day, first school, first in school history. So we're able to honor that. So that's a great momentum builder for that program. Aiden Bellisle takes on the Section 6 championship. This is, tennis is a tough sport and he was able to represent Amherst as an individual singles player. He got fourth place at sectionals, which there's a kind of a at-large bid for the state championship. If it was last year, he'd be at states too, but unfortunately, Section 6 didn't have the at-large bid, but just another great accomplishment for him. And a great showing at our track state qualifiers, which were just last weekend, a lot of, a lot of records, a lot of PRs, and a lot of things, a lot of patches handed out at that for our track, our track athletes that made it to those state qualifiers. Baseball, 13 innings, they lost the Far West Regional in that baseball game, but we're proud to call them back-to-back Section 6 A1 champions again. And for the first time in a long time, total Class 8 champions, which that is the Section 6 rep to play in the state tournament. Unfortunately, their season ended at the Far West Regional against Pitt-Sutherland. But another, just another great accomplishment with Coach Davis and those guys at the varsity JV and modified level, what they're doing for that program, and this is the result of that. Autumn Bailey, she just returned from the girls' golf state championships. She, through Section 6, she plays with our boys' team because of how the seasons line up. But she, she's able to choose between the boys and/or the girls' sectional championships. Her scoring at the girls' sectional championships earned her a spot at the girls' state championships for golf, which she just came back from. And out of all the golfers, she earned 78th place, which is a feat in itself. And as a sophomore, what an experience for her to be there. And congrats to her and Coach Jones on an awesome season. And last but not least, our Unified Sports. I can't say enough about the inclusion, the culture, the camaraderie, the relationships that are built with this program. Just starting with our bowling, you can just kind of see the smiles on their faces and that's just one of many of those. But just to highlight those guys, I think my favorite moment in this season for Unified Bowling was the senior recognition, where we had partners doing speeches and sign language and the communication that was happening, the camaraderie, the hugs, the smiles. I mean, that's just why we do what we do. Going into basketball, we had a really exciting basketball season there. You could see from our culminating event, we got second place, we lost to a tough one against Akron, so we were in second place at the Unified Culminating Event. Something we're very proud of is we were able to have a fans-in-the-sands game for our Unified Basketball Team, which they competed against Maryvale. Oh, there's something there, but. They competed against Maryvale during the school day. So at the end of the school day, the high school was kind enough to kind of have an assembly where our kids competed against Maryvale during the day. And just the roars and the screams and the cheering, not only just for us, but for both teams, was pretty spectacular. I just want to kind of play some of my moments there for how they came in and just bringing the pep band back. I mean, that's pretty spectacular. And then when's the last time we aired the pep band? Just, just an amazing day for Amherst High School and Amherst Unified Sports. That was a picture of the kids at the game just together. Afterwards, they had a pizza party, they hung out in the gym, they all kind of know each other now for playing each other the last few years. Just a great program that we're involved for those kids. Aside from that, and then part of the competitive, competitive experience is athlete recognition. Anytime we could recognize our athletes and coaches, much like today, through senior rec programs, through athlete signing, through our Athlete of the Week program. We just had our athlete, college-bound athlete recognition signing the other day. It was a great ceremony with parents and our kids. Just a little small something where we had breakfast with them and able to honor their next-level achievements because they want more. And that's pretty spectacular and it's great to celebrate with those kids and families. Along with athlete recognition, we do a lot on social media. I like this, it's my own kind of personal journal, actually. When we're able to highlight anything from sporting events that we're at or that I receive, whether it's Instagram or Twitter, it's always a fun, fun time to celebrate those kids on there. I always like to think all the kids are on our Instagram and all the rest of everybody else is on our Twitter. So it's, it's always fun. There are some videos here I want to show, but I'll kind of spare you that. But this goes into pride, and I'll just talk about that for a second, because it's just some prime examples in evidence of the school pride that we're able to foster and the culture we're able to foster. From our high school pep rally, if you see it, if you click on it later, it's a video that goes to our high school pep rally where the football team does a play with George Scandura and throws it to him in the end zone, which is great. The Smallwood pep rally, where they're doing their song in the beginning. The Windermere pep rally, where just Coach Bachman has them all going crazy in the gym. And one of my favorite moments from the year, when one of our guys scored in a game and I turned around, I'm standing there on the track and I turn around and just the jungle's right there, just, and they're going crazy. So I'll, the volume's kind of high, it'll blow up the room a little bit, but when you get a chance, it'll, it'll put a smile on your face, for sure. And that's just, just some prime examples of the pride that we have. Along with pride, we celebrate sportsmanship. Again, this year, we were awarded the Award of Excellence from the NFHS. And we're also up for the NISPA Sportsmanship Promotion Award, which we receive, if we get it, in August. We met the requirements, we're up for it, so hopefully I'm able to receive that and all of this for us. One of the honors, one of the great honors I love is when we get sportsmanship awards from officials groups. We see all these things happening with officials, you know, not wanting to, to work in that field because of whatever reason. Whenever an officials group for the whole section gets together and says, "This program exemplifies that and is the example of that," that is always one of the proudest moments I can have because that's when coaches are the example on the sideline, our kids are the example on the field, and our community is the example when they're spectators. And our boys' lacrosse team was able to get that honor from that officials group this year. Coach Hen was able to be there at the sectional championship to, to get that award, to receive that award on our behalf. Character, we did a lot with this with the Unified Program. We amped it up a little bit more with Coach Higgins. And now we have, in that sport, there's more character awards now, there's sponsors for it. We're really honing in on that character and sportsmanship. And along with that character piece, I just love when teams bring the teachers to games and they have teacher recognition in there, they'll pick their favorite teacher. I think that just shows a lot. And then there's George receiving the character award after culminating event from, from the basketball season. And Mike Fabian getting the sportsmanship award for that game as well. Just anytime we could recognize that type of example is amazing. And along with the participation we get at our pull-up punch for our Unified Tigers. Sportsmanship comes leadership, we don't have it without it. Just some prime examples of this, this happens on a daily basis, but just some examples of, of what this looks like for us with boots on the ground and who's with our kids. Coach Bauer earned ECIC Coach of the Year this year for wrestling, which is a huge honor for him. Grace Locata earned All-B, Coach of the Year for her accomplishments, and that had a great way up in the B for her. Coach Kenzie, he's around, he sticks with us and he's around, and he was nominated into the Boys' Basketball Hall of Fame. And so it's a, it's a family affair with those guys and he's with us and we like to recognize that. Coach Savatino won the New York Assistant Coach of the Year Award and represented New York at the National Conference this year, which was awesome. They had this very cool banner for him. And that was a great event where they, he represented the Assistant Coach of the Year for New York with the rest of the states. And they had a nice program for them. Also, Coach Campbell Keenan, winning the Buffalo Marathon. I mean, what more of an example can you be for your kids at your coaching? Not only leadership from the adults, but this year, I'd probably say we really took a big focus on student leadership. We were able to send some of our kids through Captain's Club, to the Cross Training Athletics Student Leadership Summit. We had speakers, they talked about leadership, they put the kids together to kind of talk about what goes on in our schools, how they promote themselves, what, what kind of leadership traits they are, what kind of leaders they are. And that just enhances kind of what we do in our program. And for the first annual, we were able to take a bunch of our student athletes to the ECIC Student Leadership Summit, where we had Speaker Missy West, Duke National Champion, and the great girls' basketball spoke to our kids. And they did a lot of those exercises as well, talking to other schools. You know, one of my favorite ones, what don't you like about your coaches? What do you like? So seeing that list was, was pretty neat and they were able to talk about it. This is a big focus for me, giving these kids these opportunities to focus on leadership, just to enhance the skills that they already have. Culture, I couldn't fit everything on a bunch of slides, but culture starts from the ground up, which is why I love our alignment between our Modified JV and Varsity Teams. Anytime, anytime we can put our older, older student athletes with our younger student athletes, that hits home. One of my favorite moments this year was our relationship that we created with Acing Autism. Coach Biddle and some of those guys started volunteering with them in their program that they have over at the Miller Tennis Center. From there, the kids grasped onto it and they go, "Mr. Adams, we want to have a pickleball tournament as a fundraiser for Acing for Autism that they participated in." And they had a big showing here, over at our high school gym. So kudos to those kids for organizing that. Not only that, but the food drives, both of the tennis teams do. And just some prime examples of getting our younger teams with our varsity teams. I think that's a huge, it's a big part of my philosophy. And anytime we can connect that, it's going to be important. Just another moment of our kids at Acing for Autism, our kid, our student athletes participated in the Health and Wellness Fair again. One of my, another favorite moment, I can't speak to it enough, is when our kids are with our older kids. When our younger kids, our younger groups are with our older kids, it's just the smiles, the, it just beer them and it's amazing. So culture, I can't speak to it enough and I wanted to stay and talk more, but I know you guys know. A big focus this year was on our Strength and Conditioning Program. This happens every, every sports season. Long story short, we really honed in with Coach Orvitsky, Coach Bauer. We really made it a program for in-season coaches, out-of-season coaches, in-season athletes, out-of-season athletes, delineated those fine lines, schedules, programming, what we're doing, what we want to see out of the kids. And that's just the start. This is going to just keep growing. And so we're really proud of the work we put into this, this year. Which leads me into PE. Again, another realm, you got athletics, you got PE, you could talk about it forever. One of the things we did, we invited the band, we participated in the Buffalo Bandit School Program, where they came, three of their players came, and they basically taught our PE classes with our PE teachers, taught them the sport of lacrosse in the, at Windermere for the day, they were there the whole day, which was, which was great. Our Smallwood kids got to participate in the Miller Tennis Center Program. We brought back the all-school bandit tournament at the high school, a huge hit, which was great. The high school was really leaning with us this year, so we brought all that back. It put smiles on our kids' faces, so we're grateful for that. The elementary school track meet, the 47th annual, that's pretty huge, we just had that. We had St. Ben's, Smallwood and Windermere participants. Interim Urals, we really focused on organizing those with our teachers. That interim urals program is such an asset to this district and something that we really need to focus on and schedule. And we did a lot of good work with that this year. We brought swimming back to the middle school PE curriculum, which hasn't been in that curriculum since prior to COVID, so we're real proud to get that back implemented for our kids. At the high school, PE 1 and PE 2, that challenge by choice, we give that high school atmosphere, which excels. We're really focused on that over the summer, scheduling, how we want that to look. And we really got a really good look at it this year with the kind of competitive PE and not-so-competitive PE. They're doing the same things, it's just not, you're in a, you're not in a room full of athletes and you're really focusing on, you're still getting the social aspect of phys ed and all that good stuff. I just want to give a quick shout-out to our Windermere PE staff. They're starting to, they've been co-teaching classes and doing units together, which brings us into Project Aces, which is a great program they do over at Windermere. It was a great morning for us. And this year, we got our student athletes involved, so again, providing those opportunities for leadership. Along with the, some UV athletes, about a half dozen of them came over and they were working together to put on that program all morning over at Windermere, which is a movement program. They go to different stations, they crush it all morning and then they go eat lunch and get sick. But just an all-around great program. Phys ed is blooming, we have a great program here and I'm super proud of the people we have in it and the kids that participate in it. Health education, I mentioned our Health and Wellness Fair, we were able to bring that back as well, which was a huge hit again this year. Our vendors from our community, it connects our school community with the, with the Health and Wellness vendors in our community and connects them to different services that they provide and can take advantage of. Another thing I'm really proud of is our elementary health program. I don't think people realize how much of an asset, again, if you talk about assets, but a huge asset to our kids this is, to have health at the K5 level. We really looked at our curriculum this year and more importantly, timelines, when are we teaching these certain units based on, kind of being strategic based on when we should teach it, for example. We would teach a certain unit prior to when Windermere goes to swim, but Smallwood doesn't swim, so just an example of how that works. We also incorporated more social-emotional learning into our curriculum this year using Second Step. Gianna Lewis, or I'm sorry, Gianna Lewis, Maya Lewis now, and Gianna Buckley did a lot of work with this along with Corbin Kelly at our middle school. So really hone in on what we want to do and target the, the learning objectives and what we want our kids to know as they, as they transform through that program. Youth mental health training through a grant. We have two teachers that are going to be, kind of teach the teachers on that and train the trainers, and Maya and Gianna are a part of that as well. So some good leadership happening from our teachers and that health education program. I'm excited for that. I'm excited for that continued work moving forward. So did we do it? Did we align everything that we wanted to to our mission? Did we get to all of our components? And I'd say we did. We accomplished our mission this year through engagement, through student leadership and making our school community the center, that focus of where our kids and families want to be. And they feel 100% and say wanting to be here. So again, thank you for all of your support as we move through another year in health, phys ed and athletics.
Certainly a lot to capture, a lot that happens in a year. I mean, it keeps standing, it keeps standing out to me, the 50-plus percent participation in both our middle and high school and in all the accolades. And, you know, not to mention your presence at most of our home events is very welcome and appreciated. You know, it's somewhat of a track meet in and of itself to go through three sports seasons in a year. And you did it very well and very successfully and you presented it very succinctly because there's a lot there. So great job and thanks for another successful year.
All right. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I think that moves us on to new business.
Hey, we need a motion for new business items.
I'll make that motion to approve new business items E1, A through Q, 2, A through D, 3, A, C, D, and E.
Do you have a second? Any discussion? Here comes the big moment everyone here for you. All those in favor of approving new business items E1, A through Q, 2, A through D, and 3, A, C, D, and E, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I want to say welcome back Mrs. Pasquale to our team and welcome to our other new team members. We look forward to working with you. Would you mind just standing and introducing yourselves to the board and what you're going to be, what building and what you're going to be doing to our new team members here?
Yes, okay. I'll go first. Hi, I'm RC Pasquale. Currently I'm the building principal over at Cleve Hill, but I'm returning to, to Amherst and rejoining Windermere, which I am so happy about. I was there for 12 years as a special education teacher. And I remember my last time presenting to the board. Mrs. Ernst, you said at that meeting, because that was when I resigned to go over to Cleve Hill to be the assistant principal, you say, you never know, maybe you'll be back one day. And that stuck with me and I remember that. And I always thought, well, you never know, maybe. And I'm so thrilled to be able to return to Windermere.
At one of her last meetings, she gets so profuse of that.
Oh, okay. Yes, so. Yep, yep. So that always stuck with me. So I'm, I'm thrilled to, to be back, so.
Very happy to have you.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
I'm Alexandra Bessinger and I'm an occupational therapist and I'll be the new OT at the middle school.
Great. Welcome to our team.
I'm Jessica Bauer. I'm going to be the new health teacher at the middle school for Courtney Kelly and then also PE at the high school.
Fantastic. Welcome to our team.
Thank you.
I'm Ryan Manzel. I'm going to be the new middle school physical education teacher. Currently at Batavia, teaching health. That was my first year there and I'm super excited to join the staff.
Fantastic. Welcome aboard. We look forward to having you. You missed the big thing, you know? You missed everything.
It's okay. Should we do it again?
All right, Mrs. Pasquale, do we have any follow-up action items?
I just made a note to send the board the presentation, Mr. Adams' presentation. So that we can click that.
And we will need a motion to convene to executive session.
I want a motion to convene to executive session to discuss matters regarding a student disciplinary matter and if we have a particular.
We have a second. All in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carries 6-0. Thank you, everybody, for coming.